Good evening, the board meeting has not started yet but we wanted to do some A P tests. So I see a few of those you online and if you can see and you can raise your hand yeah. And great okay so I think we are good today. Thanks so much. We started on stage four. We started on the floor.
We should put something that is not on microphone, we have a little confusion. Earlier today, I think, I think somebody thought, yeah, it was like, uh. Thank you. All right, are we all here? Okay. Give in everyone, welcome to our first board meeting for the 2024-2025 academic year at the San Rafael City Schools. My name is Susanna Martel Dow and I'm still the president of the San Rafael City Schools Board of Education. Uh, yes, so, um, so besides welcoming everyone, I just want to confirm that we also have Spanish translations. Tenemos traducción en español, so if you do need a headset, please let us know or be assumed. No puedes ir via Zoom levantando la mano si necesitas traducción al español. So we'll have a very busy day today, but the first day, we, the first order of business is to open with our pledge of allegiance and I have asked a key member of ours, of the staff of the district, Morena Parada, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today. Yeah.
To the United States of America, we consider Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, um, so before we get going, we have to announce reportable clause section item that the board to action on. And so please, for those listening, make sure you reach out to our director, Susan Achem, if you have any more questions about these cases. So we'll begin with the first one, that one was canceled. We did not hear item number one of the inter-district transfer. We did hear, um, the inter-district transfer appeal for the second item and the case is I T R, I'm sorry, the place here, I'll have it here, sorry. So the board decided to uphold the staff recommendation to deny the transfer request for student case two four two five two. And the following vote as follows, was moved by trustee Palma, taken by the Nueva Marsh. And the yes were all the rest, trustee Kerner, Martin and Martel. So we denied the transfer request for that students. And item number three in our agenda. It will be also a confidential to the matter and item two four two five three for high school. And the board also decided to uphold the staff recommendation to deny this transfer request for the student case two four two five three. And the vote was as follows, moved by trustee the Nueva Marsh and second by trustee Kerner, with yes votes from Palma, Martine and Martel. Consideration of confidential to the matter, now we move to item five. I believe, oh, four, sorry, four. And that is case two four two five four. And the board decided to uphold the staff recommendation to deny the transfer request from that student. Again, to point two five four, it was moved by trustee Martin, second by trustee Palma. And the yes were trustee Kerner, Daniela Marsh and trustee Martel. And the other case. The board decided to uphold the staff recommendation to deny the transfer requests for student case two four two five five. And the vote was as follows, moved by trustee Palma, taken by trustee Kerner, yes from the Nueva Marsh, Martine and Martel. And the last, um, okay, so those are the all the cases for inter-district transfer. Please know that if you have any questions about your case, make sure you connect with our director, Susan Achem. And I want to also thank the staff and everyone involved in this here. All right, okay, the last item that are reportable from possession is personal matter, public employee contract for the title of deputy superintendent for business services. And in close session, the board voted to approve the contract for the deputy superintendent of business services, Mr. Boomer Kuchi, and the vote was as follows. It was moved by trustee Daniela Marsh, taken by trustee Martin, and the yes were trustee Kerner and trustee Martel, and we have one absent, the trustee Palma in the voted and the call and the matter was approved. Again, thank you for the staff and the superintendent for all of these items that we have to report. We have to report from close session. All right, I will need now a motion to approve our, are we doing? Oh, that's true, where's that one? Oh, is that it? That's true. But we have to report on that, that's, that's good confirming litigation of your list. I apologize, thank you for being, that's why I have you read the pledge of allegiance. Because you, you are absolutely indispensable for this board, thank you so much. Okay, great, so. So another item that the, the, the board also have to hear about this evening was conference with legal counsel about anticipated litigation. Um, what about student number one oh six three six nine, well, that's the case, sorry, one oh six three six nine oh one three two, um, for San Rafael City Schools. And in close session, the board voted to approve a compromise agreement with the parents of student one oh six three six nine oh one three two to resolve potential special education claims against the district. The agreement includes reimbursement of special education services and attorney's fees in exchange for a waiver of special education claims to date. The vote was as follows, it was moved by trustee Palma and it was second by trustee the Nueva Marsh. Yes, where Martine, Kerner and Martel in that item passed. All right, thank you very much, the other one we have not discussed, all right. Now, if you don't mind, I would appreciate if, improve the agenda. Perfect, moved by trustee Martins for approve the agenda, my best person is the Martin, sorry.
I second the motion.
Uh, second by trustee Kerner, all those who pay for please say yes, I, sorry, I.
You're good.
I, affirmative abstentions. No, see none, the motion passes and we have, uh, agenda has been approved today, all right. We'll start with some of the announcements, um, I know it's been a long summer, but I don't know if we can start with some of our trustee updates. Trustee Kerner, yeah, I'm sorry that put you on the spot because it's been a while, but if there's anything you would like to share with the board.
It has been a while, however, I did have a very good conversation, I had a, a meeting with one of our retired teachers, kind of as a follow-up from the retirement ceremony at the end of the year. I just kind of wanted to, um, under, like, unfortunately I could go to that event, so I wanted to get some feedback about the, the perceptions around that and then also some, like, how the teachers that she has interacted with have perceived some of the things that happened at the board meetings, what happens with this group. And I thought that feedback was, was really good, I look forward to sharing that with the group. I hope to do more of that, I do want to open up for anyone who's on the board listening, so I, I also, I, I realize now that it can be intimidating potentially to reach out to, to us, to connect, which I, I think is funny when I think of myself, I think of it, of it being intuitive, but putting it, turning it around, I do understand why it's there, so I do want to extend for teachers, staff, facility, or anyone within the district. Um, if you have concerns, please do reach out via email. Um, and at this point, like, I do have time to, to meet and get to connect at times. Um, and I will leave my calendar open to do that, I, maybe if it gets flooded, maybe I'll have to rethink that, but that's not the case now. So I'm open to do that, so that's the way I'll kick off this year. I, I find those, those conversations to be most helpful, they can be one-on-one, and so there, it's very easy to talk them with.
Appreciate that, trustee Kerner. Uh, trustee Daniela Marsh, do we have enough days of the summer?
You know, welcome back to all of our staff from your amazing summer vacation and to those preparing their classrooms for the kickoff to the new school year. It's a really exciting time, I really wanna, um, uh, I just really want to positively affirm what you just shared, trustee Kerner, I know that we all can't be everywhere all at once, but our doors are open, our ears are listening, and you know, it's not about good or bad feedback. It is strong constructive feedback to strengthen our relationship and our presence in all the service to our children and families of San Rafael, and so, um, I, I hear you and see you and wherever we can meet up, whether it be virtually or in person. Um, as your Marin delegate for Marin County School Board Association to the California School Board, Association larger body, I serve on your executive committee and that is representative of all the seventeen school districts, including College of Marin. And what that means is that we work in partnership together to provide programming or workshops or just opportunities for us to connect as school board representatives. Because we are, although in our own individual school districts, we work together as a strengthened unit for all the benefit of our families here and the children in San Rafael. Uh, with that, we had our first M C S B A meeting, I don't like to work in acronym, so that's why I spelled out Marin County School Board Association, uh, last week. And we're excited to have a welcome back event that's going to be hosted in September at Homeward Bound in Marin, really focused on housing opportunities for our workforce here in Marin County, not just educators, but, um, all staff dealing with, um, our schools. And the last thing I want to uplift is to our senior director, Tim Ryan, as well as his facilities team. I know this hasn't been fully uplifted in all of San Rafael City School social media or digital communications, but because we are connected professionally on LinkedIn, I saw some of those cool sizzle reels, right? I know, the team's laughing, but honestly, it, the, these, these videos were short snippets of the amazing bond measure, um, you know, the construction of your dollars and investments, uh, back into our community. And so I, I just only saw them, uh, because Tim and I are connected professionally. I know that our, um, taxpayers, our community members on our digital social media, if you follow us, please do, would love to see the work in real-time progress. Welcome back, y'all.
Thank you so much, trustee Palma.
Boy. Impressive.
Joy, yeah.
Good evening, everyone, um, it's really nice to start this school year. And as a board trustee, I didn't have any activities going on, but in a way I did. As you know, um, the district that I represent, uh, most of them is underserved children. Meaning that during summertime, uh, they really don't go anywhere, I do coordinate two soccer leagues. One is for kids from five to nine, the other one is from, uh, five to fifteen, so I've been busy during summertime. I try to keep the kids, uh, you know, not only doing sports, but keeping them away from making wrong choices. Because wrong choices are really going in my community with the youth. So I would like, I would like the, the support from the school district for this league to continue to get them off the streets and making wrong choices. And the families also connect to me, asking me stuff, uh, regarding their education. So I am looking forward that this new year, we will have, uh, we will concentrate on, uh, parents empowerment and to have those meetings that really haven't happened, it hasn't happened. And not only about dialogue, but trying to reach out to those parents and let us know what they need from us in order to at least try to empower them to come out and advocate for their own children, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, trustee Palma, trustee Martin.
Thank you.
Vice president Martin.
Yes, I want to say thank you trustee Palma for all the work that you're doing. I want to welcome all of the families, teachers, the principals, our cabinet. Welcome to all the new families that are joining us this year. I also want to welcome back our school board members because, uh, this is a lot of work, which we love doing. And, um, you know, to trustee Kerner, I want to thank you for taking that call. And, and yes, I, I just want to echo that we want to be everywhere as much as we can. And, you know, it is hard to have a full-time job and be doing all of that, so we try the best that we can. And, uh, I also want to thank all the hard work that happened for the construction this summer. I know that I was able to see some of those school sites that were in development, thanks to all sports, but, uh, but thank you for all the hard work, so it's great to be back.
Thank you so much, uh, yes, welcome back, everyone. I wanted to acknowledge that, um, trustee Kerner and trustee the Nueva Marsh are both going to be joining the board for the next four years. So I want to congratulate my colleagues for filing papers and continuing, um, with their role as elected trustees. And I also want to, uh, note that I think that there's still a position available for District Five. Um, and I also, we will do this later, but I want to acknowledge the dedication and the work and the strength that trustee Palma has brought to us, and we'll talk more about what it happens, but there will be transitions in the school board for District Five. But I'm happy and delighted to know that we have so much stability with trustee Kerner and trustee the Nueva Marsh. So, and thank you all, we'll talk more about that, this is not necessarily the day to be sad, but I wanted to acknowledge the service and the service that all of you as trustees, um, are doing on behalf of our community. So thank you very much for that. I also wanted to acknowledge, um, in my welcome to everyone, that this is an election year. So I know that it is, uh, sometimes difficult to be in education, especially in a very polarized society. So I just want to remind everyone that our schools, uh, should be environments for, uh, freedom of speech, for people to feel safe and for creating an environment as government, right? And as folks, we have to make sure that we are, um, available ourselves to diverse points of views. And that, uh, even though tensions and polarization has become, um, something of every day, um, I think we can lead by example, and I think we have done this, and I, I really salute and congratulate our superintendent, who in the last year, we have seen a lot of transitions with staff. We have seen a lot of challenges and I want to also acknowledge that it will be the start of the second year for our superintendent. And I wanted to make sure the community knew that, uh, we are ready for our second year. And we are excited to partner with our superintendent to continue the work on behalf of, of our students. Um, also have heard a lot this summer and read a lot about the use of cell phones in classrooms. Everything that has to do with artificial intelligence, um, the board has had some discussion about this. And, um, I know there's not been actually policies all across the country that want to ban cell phones in schools, so you know, I know that those things are out there, I'm not saying one thing or the other, but I just want to acknowledge that those are the themes that I've been seeing around education on top of all of the challenges that I know you're all still dealing with. We have to ensure our academic performance for our students continues and we improve. We have to make sure that we bring excellence in our classrooms, uh, providing the support that our students need and also ensure that our teachers and staff in cabinet have the recognition and the support that they need to do the work that they have to do. With that, I would like to pass it to our superintendent, Carmen Daisos, um, for any updates, anything she would like to share.
Thank you for the president, Martel Dow, well, first and foremost, thank you for your patience, your understanding, your excitement for our construction project, and I cannot say this without, it's just so exciting that our short school early learning center is ready to open. And the project has been a great collaboration with the maintenance operations, right? In, instructional technology, food nutrition, education and student services, CAM and the city of San Rafael. Thank you devil superintendent Mark Kuchi, thank you Tim, thank you the entire capital projects team. There's still a few little things we need to do, but we're very excited and we will hopefully have a ribbon cutting ceremony the same day as back to school night for the short campus. Also too, thanks to the educational services department, there's a lot of fabulous professional development going on right now for all of our teachers and staff, we're really excited about that. And, um, speaking of cell phones, um, this summer, I met with And speaking of cell phones, this summer, I met with out of the seventeen superintendents, I met with ten. We're very interested in revising and reviewing this local policy. So we're trying to work together to do that as as far as also with e-bikes. We're also working on that project.
That's great.
So that's a big discussion going for us at our county superintendent meeting. And then lastly, I just want to welcome all of you and invite trustees and everyone to our San Rafael school. All staff welcome on August twentieth from eight thirty to ninety thirty. We'll be in the trailer the next three days. So we'll be making love to see you.
I'll be there. Yep. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that as superintendent. Right, so we don't have student board members. I would love to hear eventually if we're going to have those back again.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So we're working, we're working on that.
Yes. People on the school staff and maybe the principal will more constantly keep that. Some of them already have selected.
That's great. So we're working on that. So we'll expect to have students soon. You see what happens? We get started and the principals work with the with the sites. And then we are like they, you know, work on getting someone on the on the board. All right. Sounds great. Okay, our neighbor partners. Why don't we start with SRTA?
They I'm not seeing them online. Somebody's online and wants to raise their hand. Seen them?
All right, how about SRTA?
Yeah, so Brianna, just a second, please. Can you be able to unmute yourself and start your video?
Are you able to see and hear me?
Um, I might have to play up the settings, but we can hear you.
Oh, how weird. You can't see me, but I can see myself.
For sure, Brianna, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. All right. Well, hi, everybody. Good evening. I know Molly's there in person. Giddy evening, everyone. I am Brianna Padilla, president of San Rafael Teachers Association, or SRTA, representing our early intervention through eighth grade educators. And this evening, SRTA would like to welcome back everyone that's gearing up for the start of the school year, especially the forty-five new hires that are joining us, which is pretty exciting. Big chunk of people, but we're excited. And we know that there are many behind the scenes tasks and activities that are taking place long before students and families step on campuses from construction, maintenance, communications, professional development, and a lot more. Last week, TK through eight educators across sites attended the differentiated assistance meeting to review English language arts, English language development, and math assessment data to launch the ongoing differentiated assistance work that MCOE and SRCS are partnering partnering on. And since last week, you'll find many of our educators in optional professional development. Many site and instructional leadership teams had retreats today. And the older residency orientation also took place today. This Thursday, TK through five educators will be back for the first district wide professional development. And some middle school teachers that day will be in English language development PD for before their first teacher workday on Friday. And then Monday, all educators will participate in district and site PD before everything else throughout the rest of the week. And we know all of our educators are eager to get back into their classrooms. We are excited about the progress and the completion of construction as that takes place throughout the rest of this school year across the sites. So as some of you have mentioned, the bond program website has been a great resource for the updates of the ongoing work. So thank you to Tim Ryan and his team for all the information that's been shared there. Mo, I also, or excuse me, trustee Daniva March, I also have appreciated those sizzles. I saw those the other day, and that was that was a nice quick update. And also a huge thank you to the maintenance and operations staff for preparing the campuses and classrooms for both our educator and student returns. We know that with summer programs going on throughout June and July, that August is it's it. There's a time crunch. There's few, very few weeks for things to get completed in August before everybody's back. And that that places a large task on our classified colleagues. So we super appreciate all that they're doing. And with that, many of our members have reached out with the understanding and recognition of the time constraints for classroom and campus deep cleaning to actually take place. So recognizing that, we would also like to recognize the constraints that it also places on our educators in preparing classrooms for welcoming students in the time that is provided outside of district and site professional development, all before the first day of school. So receiving keys for rooms after professional development on the fifteenth, when many educators are back on campuses starting today is unfortunately placing an additional feeling of overwhelm on a lot of our members right now. So our members are super excited to prepare for our students to return and are hoping for earlier access to their classrooms. So as we get ready for this new school year, we we also are excited for the reopening of short school as the early learning center and for the start of the seven period day at Davidson Middle School. The elective offerings so far, they look impressive, and the course descriptions are I I expect some student joy from those. So we're we're excited to see everybody back, seeing everybody at the welcome back event on Tuesday and welcoming students and families back on Wednesday. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Brianna, for being here, speaking to us about the updates. How about SRT?
Seen none. Seen that.
Been up. All right. Great. So now's the time for public comments on non-advised items. Again, these are for non-advised items. Any public comments?
Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature. We'll give it a moment. Seen that.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So now we have our consent agenda. I do have items that I am going to request to be pulled from this, but I also want to open it up first to the trustees in case there are any items my colleagues would like to pull from the agenda. Pulling meaning if you want to discuss further.
Nothing for me.
Right. Nothing for me. Okay, just trying to find the contract and the number. It's thirty-three. Thirty, ten, eleven, twelve, thirty-three. Yeah, it's it was ten, eleven, twelve, right? And then the contract. Sorry. Thirty-three. Yeah. And then mental health. Not the whole screening, right? So ten, eleven, twelve, and thirty-three. And I was going to ask for updates of our our construction. Is that in the? Twenty-three. Twenty-three. Construction update. Okay, so do we have those? Because maybe we can discuss that in campus capital facilities at some point, because I didn't hear more details about that. I don't know if you're ready.
I have an update that Mr. Ryan, I know he provided YouTube, Bob, if you want to.
Okay.
Provide that.
Because we're going to have it at a time. Is it in the agenda, discussion, action? No, we don't have that. But we can have some contracts around facilities.
Right. There will be a presentation at the next board meeting by Mr. Ryan and his team.
Okay, okay. So maybe we can wait until the next meeting for updates. But because I don't know what. We should have done it when we were discussing non-items in the agenda, because I don't see a specific item in the.
No, and and it's just there are delays that are happening.
Okay.
Then we're trying to keep on more details.
Okay.
And Tim is going to do something a little bit more formal.
Yeah, no, and we will. We just want to have like a like a like an overview quickly of.
Yeah.
Something like that. So why don't I, let me just go back real quick and open for non-advised items, so that I can allow the staff to talk about this real quick. Just just very quick overview. So we have a sense in case we hear from parents and families. That'll be super helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I mean, I think Carmen alluded to, I think there's some really positive things that have happened, and I want to highlight those as well. And then there's also some you know, more frustrating things that have happened
Yeah.
related to some governing agencies that are any any capital facilities or bond program works with, and that is the Division of State Architects and the California Geological Survey. Those are both agencies that really have to approve any projects, any designs, anything that's, you know, coming from our architects. They have to approve that before we can really get started. And so there were some pretty major delays at projects, mostly at Davidson, San Rafael High School. Those are the two that are sticking out to me the most. And so that just means you know, delay, that delays the whole project. It delays the completion. And it does sometimes impact costs because the longer, you know, your bond dollar shrinks, the further out you go. And so there have been some shifts that have needed to be made. Is there anything that you want to add?
You might have something. Yeah. Yeah.
But there have been some really positive things that have happened with short school. We talked a little bit about. It's really up and running, ready to go. We have Fenicia Valley starting the school year with its new middle school restroom facility. That's exciting. Madrone has its HVAC functioning as people are coming back.
HVAC.
Also, you know, at San Rafael High School, although we had some delays, we did make a lot of progress in regards to the temporary PE facility. I think it's called Dogtown. And so those those are in place. And so we will have classrooms and spaces for our PE program to happen while we do the work. So there's a lot of progress this summer. And also some shifts and changes that, you know, that will that are impacting staff, are impacting
Yeah.
families. And it's just there's there's no way to 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 get around that sometimes. It just happens. But we're trying to be as communicative as possible, sending out sizzle reels that Tim will be very excited that you're.
Raise for the year, y'all.
I don't know if there's anything you would want to add, superintendent Daisos?
I just think that in every single school, there has been some form of improvement. For example, at Sun Valley, even though it's kind of chaotic with parking right now, but the garden, water, bar and flyway station is still in place. New TK furniture was installed and began to step. So there's lots of little things going on. At Coleman, the ADA drop off lanes and parkings are being improved. So there's a lot of work right in the going.
All right. Do trustees have any questions about this? We'll get a presentation, right? From Tim, it's going to be more detailed, but is any burning questions that you're getting from parents or families that you would like to address now? Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for communicating to parents. So this is a reminder, because my child is not in San Rafael district. I don't get those communications that may coming out. So anything you want to forward to the board to keep us, you know, updated, just forward it to us so that we kind of know and we that that keeps so we can be kept in with all of this. All right. Thank you so much for that update. Okay, so now I, with the consent agenda, I would like to pull items ten, eleven, twelve, and also item thirty-three. And again, that's more celebration item thirty-three more than anything. But okay, so we can, the way it works is that because it's a consent agenda, we can approve the remainder. And then we can discuss the rest of the items and approve them separately. So I can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception with the except for ten, eleven, twelve, and thirty-three. I mean that we have.
You.
Yes. No, I think I'm moving with that. Yeah. I'm moved by trustee Martin, vice president Martin.
Second motion.
Taken by trustee Kerner. All those people will be saying aye.
Aye.
You want against? Abstention, see none. The motion passes. All right. Thank you very much for your patience about this. So I wanted to pull this because I want to just to talk about digital. I just talked about this, right? So I kind of want to hear a little bit more about this MOU that I think is no cost. Right? For a district, but I want to understand a little bit the content, like what are we, what are we going to tell them?
And we're both up here because it came to me through our wellness program.
All right.
And then we included Christie because we we know there's a connection there with digital literacy. So overall, half the story has done parent ed and student education for us over the last couple of years. We've been contracted with them. And they know that we weren't able to contact with them again this year because we didn't have the funding for it. And they found funding and came to us and said there are pieces of this that we can provide to you this year if you're interested. And so they brought the contract to us. And Christie's actually been the one talking with them more about what those parent ed nights could be like. So that's why I have her here as well.
That's fantastic. Sure. So yeah, I basically met with the organizations. I really did want to understand the content. And so there will be a variety of things that are happening, not only activities, but then there will be engagement, parent engagement nights focusing around digital wellbeing, social media. I think this is great. The focus is for this particular contract, six through eight, and then ninth and tenth grade. That was what was offered. And so that's what we're going with. So really excited again that they approached us for this partnership. And upon working and talking with them, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with their founder to talk further about some of the goals that we have with regards to really getting digital literacy and committees and just kind of the nature of where we're heading. And so she got really excited. And so, yeah, so we're going to have a separate meeting with her about about some of the some of the things that we're interested in doing. So yeah, this is going to be, I think, great. I'm excited to, I did not know them beforehand, so looking forward.
And and you can see that the reason this came through our wellness programs because they're seeing the effect on mental health in our students, and they really want to be able to educate parents about how they can set boundaries and the types of thing conversations to have at home with their children. And to be able to continue that education for us is going to be very helpful, just reinforcing the messages that students get at school also at home.
Right there. Any questions from trustees?
And I just, my only question is, of course, making it bilingual and inclusive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. I was just looking at their site, making sure that that's a part of the journey.
What's on the, oh, yeah, go ahead, trustee. What is kind of the core of the message of this training? Like, what are we trying to tell our children?
So this is around our students. Digital wellness, right? So there's all different aspects of digital literacy. So digital wellness, really that well being that ties in with the social emotional aspect of things when we talk about what's going on outside of school and how that impacts things inside of school. Right? And making those connections, understanding about the use of screen time, understanding about the nature of addictive media, right? And what those things neuroscient like, you know, are actually doing to us in our neuroscientific way. And it can have an impact depending on the age of a student too, right? Through developmental aspects. So those are some of the highlights of that. I will be interested in seeing some of the activities that are going to be brought forth within the actual schools in addition to the parents. But all very positive things are aligned with where we're trying to go. It's a good first step for sure, yeah, to reengage.
And this is the high schools as well.
So this is going to be for sixth through eighth grade, and the ninth and tenth grade will be specifically targeted based on the contract language that was offered.
Okay, all right.
Question for the sixth through eighth of the ninth to tenth. When in the school day is anticipated? Is that in a health class or is it in a pre-period? I'm just curious about how it's going to be integrated.
Yeah, they definitely touch on this in in health class. So if it was integrated into the school day, that's probably where it would be for ninth grade. And depending on middle school, what they do with the scheduling, they could really go in many different places.
But it's really going through the digital wellness counselors and coordinators. And this is great that we have these coordinators and like as part of this nurturing the whole child, right? It's another aspect. So excited about that.
And then for the parent engagement portion, would that just be in person or is that hybrid or ironically virtual?
I think that will be a discussion, and I think that'll be a discussion with the principals. And then also they are, I believe they're open to either. So that's just a matter of discussing, you know, the nature, what would work best for that community.
Okay, that is my favorite answer. So thank you.
This is great. Thank you so much for this update.
Oh, trustee Palma.
Oh, trustee Palma.
I know.
Go ahead.
That's okay.
I like the idea of having parents engaged in this because we all need to learn a lot.
Yeah.
So are these services going to be provided just to those parents whose children have attended the wellness center? Or is it going to be open to everyone?
Open to everyone. Yeah, for in those grade levels and for those.
Yeah.
Great. That's great.
Thank you.
Well, this is great. Thank you so much for.
Well, this is great, thank you so much for, for explaining, explaining this. Now I will need a motion to approve item ten. Um, trustee, move by trustee, vice president Martin. I want against. None, that motion, that item passes, it's approved. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, appreciate the initiative with this. Now, I would like to understand a little bit this MOU that we are gonna have with Marin County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. For behavioral health services provided to San Rafael City School students during the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
Great question, this is an MOU that we, um, we put together with Marin Behavioral Health every year. Um, it, it provides us access to, our students access to the therapists that are provided through behavioral health and human services on our campuses, so there are times when there are students who are seeing a therapist outside of school, and it's easier for them to access them on the campus. This is also connected to Marin Health and Human Services, they were the recipient of our MHFA grant, the Mental Health Student Services Act grant, that funds our wellness centers. So they are the, the holders of that funding, and they coordinate with with the Student Services Department and the um wellness programs to develop things like our coordination service team. And um our, our referral systems for students to receive therapy. So that's the work that they're doing, so they have the, the wellness centers, they also have youth and family services therapy. Uh, when a student is referred for therapy through, sometimes through the probation officer, officers. Um, that is provided through youth and family services, and they may come onto campus to meet with students during the school day. Um, also, it's the funding that they receive, they give a portion of that to Huckleberry. So Huckleberry can come to the schools to do Charla Cafe for our students and talk about health and wellness issues. And, and they also coordinate the student wellness advisory program, which we have at each of the wellness centers as well, and that is coordinated, it's funded through the behavioral health, but it's run through our county office of education. There's really like four different things, different aspects that they're, they're working with us on.
That last question, are you referring to the trustee?
Oh, my apologies, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we.
I just want to, no, if you're finished, that's fine, I just want to make sure this is.
Yeah, I was referring to swap. And I, 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 the reason I uplift that is because I know it more commonly is the student wellness ambassador program. But I appreciate how you defined where that funding came from and who's holding that program, so thank you. My apologies.
No, 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 that's a good clarification, because we talk a lot about anachronism, and I think that's a very good point, I, I thank you. All right, um, so then we have the other contract, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to because I'm trying to detangle a little bit this contract, Susan, so bear with me a little bit. And we have the other, but that's for the trainees, right, that will be.
The other, the other one is with the county office of education specifically.
For the trainees.
For the trainees, they receive funding so they can provide that to.
So what I am, I, I, but, and, and this is, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're talking about this, but as a follow-up, because I'm reading the MOUs, you know, we get all this information. I think it will be very helpful for me at least, so that I can ask the right questions, is to understand like the infrastructure of the behavioral health and wellness that we are providing to students, so what I don't have is, eh, like I will ask, ask you questions, but I don't have like an image in my head of how this is being uh supervised. How it's being, like, for example, if somebody from Huckleberry is coming to our sites. They're having a different discussion that our counselors potentially have, are those, like, I am a little confused about how many touchpoints our students are having, and the, the, the oversight that we have about the type of counseling and mental health that we provide. So I, I'm trying to have a vision of how that looks like, you don't have to answer everything right now, but I think it would be a great next step to bring that to the board so that we have an understanding of where all these pieces fit with the partnerships.
Right, because some, certain partnerships are filling certain gaps, because on areas in certain grade levels. And I, I think Carmen also had her hand out.
I think for future, for the outpatient, we'd like to provide and higher work. Organizational chart of how we present mental health and wellness to students, some of them is very different. So it would just be a touch point, hey, how you doing, how's your day? And then there are some, depending on our students who need it, and then there are special ed students, so there's a whole. It would be a joint effort between the student services department and. We put a presentation for you together.
Okay. That would be fantastic, because in this particular contract, we're bringing partners, right, to talk to our students, which is a little bit separate than the counselors we are, have budget for, so this is a separate thing, that's why I'm a little bit trying to understand where.
I think part of the conversation we've been having here over the last couple of years has been about the, the high need at-risk students who we're really trying to serve the best we can with limited resources. So that's really what we're trying to reach into when we create these partnerships and we have these MOUs. Our counselors are excellent with our SEL tier one, tier two. But then when we start talking about the students who need the more intensive support, there are numerous students, and we're trying to find. You know, we, we have our limited resources within our district, and then we're also referring out within the county.
And many times that's what the response is gonna have to be, referring out, because we don't have the resources, we are not in the business of mental health, we're in the business of, so we cannot do everything, right? So we have to figure out a way to balance that. So these partnerships are important, and I appreciate you working on this, and use with, with all the partners.
What, I don't know if they, uh, sorry. Okay, no, 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 trustee Palma. Yeah, no, yes, absolutely.
This is not that formal.
Trustee, very quick, I just want to share that, uh, and please forgive my uh ignorance on this, but uh all this time I've been here, especially after the uh pandemic.
Oh, my god.
I know that they have been uh funding to deal and to open this uh uh wellness center, and I know the need is out there. And it's a lot of need for children to be seen, okay, so, but I don't recall uh hearing how many children are being seen, what is the follow-up to it? I mean, what is the goal of how many children are gonna be served? I mean, I don't recall that, but if you did say, I'd like someone to please share that information with me. Because sometimes they are called, they go to the wellness center, uh, they say they're gonna be called for a follow-up, and sometimes it really doesn't happen. So I just want to know what we're standing with that.
We, we have been keeping um really good accounting of our data of cost referrals and therapy referrals, and also our counselors always know any groups they're having, individual sessions they're having, so we do have all of that data. It will improve over the next couple of years as we use ION with more fidelity. Um, and we'll, we'll be able to pull that information really whenever the district really needs it. Um, so, but we do have that information, I think there's certain times when we've, we've shared it here and there, I think it's been some of the LCAP conversations, but we can certainly pull that together.
Yeah, I think what you're seeing under the consent are these contracts providing support, so what we need to do is give a big picture. We understand the contracts, where they fit, what the outcomes are, how we indicate that, how we support that. Every student wants to pray.
Exactly. I like that. Trustee, never march, please ask your question.
The, 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 the only two other questions I want to uplift what trustee Palma had just shared. I don't know if it's part of the presentation, or maybe it's a separate pro- um email to us, but I would just love in community language, walk me through when a student needs help. What that process looks like and feels like, if there is uh an, an adult ally, like a teacher who helps to refer that process. What that looks like and feels like, if it's a parent, I'm just a little confused about that hierarchy, so that's one. And then the second part is, how does umbrella through the community school partnerships grant? If there's touchpoints, can you just uplift it that there are bases and places that fill and gaps are strengthened? Um, and I know that that is a time limited grant, but I just, in the overall picture of general health and wellness of our students with that in partnership with our other um team.
Great, again, presentation, presentation.
My staff knows internally we are doing an audit between our multi-tiered system of support and also our special ed assessment, so that what you're saying is what we're working through right now, the systems and structures are very important. So we have a presentation, we will be working on it.
Okay, very exciting.
It will be a team effort.
Yeah, and I know we're getting started just in this academic year, but you know, it's important to have this MOU. Okay. Yes, go ahead, please.
Everyone's touched on this, but in the presentation, something very specific that would help is, is if it's like three hypotheticals of in different angles that they come and value as a service, and in those included each of the services as how they might be used. Because I suspect there's probably some common, maybe there's five or six different types, but I also suspect that again, it's the same thing, but it's just more like that exact thing. How they, like, these contract, like, how someone from Huckleberry, or how they touch that person, and how they follow up.
Yeah, we can work on something like that with the board, uh, with Susan and maybe um. Superscript, and then guys was like, maybe have a conversation about what the board wants to see, so that, you know, we can answer the questions, you're not surprised by our questions. We don't want to bring you surprises. Okay, sounds great, so I will need the board, and the other ones are the trainees with MCOE, so those are the contracts, okay. So the trainees, okay, that sounds great, so why don't I entertain a motion to approve item um eleven and twelve? Was it eleven, yeah, eleven and twelve from the consent agenda, please? Thank you, I think we have to do each item at once. And I need um approval of um item eleven, please. A motion to approve item eleven? Move to trustee Palma, second by trustee Martin, and I'll need an, uh, all those in favor please say aye. The motion passes, now I need someone to uh move to uh prove the MOU between San Rafael City Schools and, and MCOE. Um, for the health training program. Move by trustee Palma. Second by trustee Werner. And all those in favor please say aye. You want against, abstentions, none, that item passes, thank you so much. Okay, and then item thirty-three, I wanted to pull this item just because I wanted to celebrate and um, this is the approval of our collective bargaining agreement of the revised collective bargain agreement between San Rafael City Schools and San Rafael uh professional teachers, so I just want to congratulate the staff and recognize SRT, um, as our label partners, and for, you know, making sure that we can revise this agreement and just really celebrate that as we start the school year. Any other comments from the trustees? All right, great work, everyone, and I'm sorry SRT is not here today, but I, I really wanted to uh point that out. Uh, do, we don't have a, we approve already, you need to approve, yes, no, but I wonder if we have another contract for SRT. We did, so let's do that one too, that's item twenty-eight. So we approved that one already, but I'm gonna make a comment about that one as well, because we also wanted to recognize the work that SRTA did last year to negotiate and work with our cabinet, and Darlene, I know this was your first year. So I just wanted, I wanted to recognize that as well, right, I know it's a lot of work involving you, and of course, uh, with the, working with our superintendent. But this is, having both contracts is great, so, thank you very much for both, congratulations. All right, but I will need a, a motion to approve item thirty-three, please. Motion to approve item number thirty-three, um, move by trustee never march, do you have a second?
A second, much.
A second by trustee Werner, all those in favor please say aye. Abstentions, no, see none, that motion passes, all right, thank you very much, everyone, and I'm so sorry that we are running late. But we want to try to catch up. Okay, now we are going to move. Discussion action, um, item, thank you. We are going to approve resolution, uh, this is from elementary district. Resolution two four two five one, authorizing the issuance on sale of San Rafael Elementary School District uh election of twenty twenty-two general obligation bonds, series B, subformality.
Yeah, we, uh, we are moving into selling the second series of our elementary bonds. And each time you do that, there's a whole team of people that work with us to um make sure that we're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's, which, which these, this item and the one after it are a part of that, where we are essentially as a board, you're appealing to um, the county to, um, you know, to allow us to sell these bonds and to set a tax rate for those bonds, so we work with the ISAM advisors. Stiefel, uh, Dennis Woolver and Kelly, and our great capital facilities team. Carmen and I uh get to be on calls and, and speak on the House of District. Say important stuff. Say yes to important things.
Very technical, any questions from the board, please? All right, um. Very important those bonds is to help us be able to do all the things.
Yes.
So thank you, um, everyone working on that. And do I have a motion to approve this resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of San Rafael City School um, twenty twenty-two general obligation bond series B? I move, we move, uh, move by, um, by vice president Martin, second by trustee Palma, all those in favor please say aye. No abstentions, no votes, see none, that motion passes, thank you very much. We'll move to the next item, uh, also from elementary district, resolution two four two five, um, of the Board of Education. Um, requesting the board of supervisors of the county of Marin establish a tax rate for bonds to be sold during the fiscal year twenty four, twenty twenty-five, and authorizing necessary actions in connection there with. Tell us a little bit about that, very technical.
So essentially the, the county of Marin is who levies the taxes, right? Property taxes and all of the different bonds and measures um that are out there, and so this is essentially establishing a relationship. We're re-establishing a relationship with them to set the rate for um the, the, what will, what will show up on people's tax bill, right, and what that rate is, and, and that it matches, meets all the various criteria that are out there for, for those uh taxes, so.
Yeah, and these are uh measures that were approved by our uh voters.
Yes, they were approved in twenty twenty-two. We sold the first series in all districts, we sold the second series in high school. Towards the end of, in the spring, and we waited uh for the elementary, because you, you need the, the uh, the bonding capacity to get to a certain level before you can, um, you know, sell the next series and ensure that you're, you're getting the full uh forty-five million out of that, out of that sale. So that's why the timing is maybe a little different between the elementary district and the high school district. But this allows us to move into phase, you know, some, phase two of some projects and continue uh moving forward, and though there will be a third series for each district sold when that time comes, probably sometime in twenty twenty-six, I believe. Am I right about that, Bill?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And, and if you want a lot more information, Bill would be happy to. Bonds and how that works, if you have any specific questions.
Trustees, any questions right now, or you can always reach out to Bob with them.
No questions.
Okay, this is great, um, I do need, uh, but again, thank you to all the families, um, not just families, but anyone who's a resident. Uh, children or no children, so I just want to highlight the fact that all these folks are approving of, having great schools, even though they may not even have children. So thank you to all the residents. Um, do I have a motion to approve um this resolution to part two, two four two five two? Please, you bones, move, okay, move by trustee, by vice president Martin, do I have a second? Second by trustee Kerner, all those in favor please say aye. You want against? Abstentions, see none, all right. Now let's move to human resources, approval of variable term waiver, please tell us about this, Darlene, is this item yours?
Yes, thank you, President Martell Down, so item eleven point three is the approval of the variable term waiver. This agenda item presents for board approval, the application for variable term waivers on behalf of certified secondary staff, Mr. Kent Morales, this board approval will allow the administrator to complete their program. This board approval will allow the administrator to complete their program and credential process for their appropriate credential. And will reconcile S R C S's compliance requirement to have all teachers either credentialed or on an improved pathway toward credentialing. Mr. Morales is awaiting the results of his, um, exam and would then, um, be able to apply for the administrative credential. So we are recommending a profile of this application for a variable term waiver.
Any questions from trustees? Alright, no questions. Do I have a motion to approve a variable term waiver?
Motion to approve.
Should move by trustee Kerner, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dana Marsh, all those in favor, please, say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions, no, see none, that motion passes, alright. Um, last action item, education services, high school and elementary, first reading to review revisions to our policies and administrative regulations six one four three. For courses studies, six one, six one, one, selection and evaluation of instructional materials. And supplementary instructional materials, um, for the library media center. So who is presenting?
Thank you.
This is your first presentation in your new role.
Yes, yeah. Yes, so we're gonna bring with you four separate items. Um, these are updates, these are all first reads. So you'll have, we'll give you a brief overview of them, and then you'll have time to look them over before we bring them for consent on the next, um, board meeting. So the first item presented to the board is a first read of revisions is for policy six one four three. And administrative regulation six one four three. Again, these are, these revisions are all based on updates from the C S B A policy. Um, so the first one, uh, policy six one four three, courses of study. This really updates some of the language in that to be more inclusive language, um, in terms of, um, accurately and respectfully representing the populations and students that we serve. And it also talks about, um, in the A R version, uh, component of it, talks about. Um, in, ensuring that we offer, uh, health force in our secondary class, uh, for secondary students, which we do. And then in that health, uh, of course, we are including kind of broad topics around mental health as well. It also includes, um, that the, uh, requirement of the twenty-five, twenty-six ethnic studies requirement be included in the administrative. In that show, that is six one four three, board policy.
I'm looking for applause for all of mine. As much fun as board policies. The next one, I'm gonna kind of group together, cause they're all related. So when C S B A does these. One of the things they do is they group the ones that are related and kind of give them to you as a set. And so the next few are actually a set, and I'm, I'm gonna try to draw the links between these. And then what I would also say. Um, is just reach out to civilian and I, if you have questions about these, there's a lot of language, there's a lot of crossouts and, and red words and so forth. So please do reach out. Um, so the first one is a both an administrative regulation and a board policy six one, six one dot one. And it's on instructional materials. Um, and so the changes in this are, uh, a few things. One, they're, they talk a little bit about some of the things to consider when adopting instructional materials. Um, including, uh, in their words, um, make sure that they are, they accurately reflect and value society's diversity. And so that's one of the things that they're thinking about there. They talk about making sure that a process is in place to do, um, instructional materials adoptions. We have already our elementary freshman advisory committee and secondary, so we have those in place, those include teachers, parents. Um, uh, and also, and students as appropriate, um, and really they're looking for alignment to standards and things, right? So they're just kind of pulling us back to that. Um, embedded in this also is the sufficiency of instructional material. Um, and so there is a process we go through at the beginning of every year to make sure that we have sufficient material at all of our school sites. Um, and there's a complaint process for anyone who feels that that does not. That is all embedded in, in sixty-one, sixty-one point one. In board policy sixty-one, sixty-one point eleven, which is supplemental instructional materials, it goes through all the same things. And just said the same must also be true for any supplemental materials we have. Um, and then the last thing you have in here is also the, the, um, shift in the forms that they're asking us to use for. Uh, sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials. So those ones kind of all come as a group. Um, and then the last one is sixty-one, sixty-three point one, um, and it's around libraries. Um, and this one is exciting for us, because this is a lot of the work that we have been doing. Which is around really making sure that our materials in our libraries are up to date as possible, and also reflective of society in general. Um, we have spent a lot of money really trying to bring these up to date, so bringing up the collections from the late nineteen nineties to the early two thousands. Has been work that we've really been prioritizing. Um, it also talks about the need to have librarians, um, which we do. Uh, and then library media specialists to often support the day-to-day work in our schools. Um, and how important it is to link library, what happens in the library, to what happens in the instructional day. So that's also work that we have been doing. Um, and then it also talks about no late fees, um, and which we, we don't have, um, but it, it puts that in the. So those are the other kind of group of board policies and administrative regulations for you to review. Um, and then we'll bring those back as a consent, uh, second read in two weeks.
And those are on, like, sorry.
That's right, yes, good, are you, are you finished? Okay. No, no, I wasn't, I was reading.
Are, are these posted now, for, for us to read the, the details of it, and then from the details, I can ask questions separately between now?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions from the, the trustees, from the board?
Just for clarification, these are boilerplate language from C S B A's recommendations. And so for us to update our policies to align with C S B A. Um, I know that you just said that, I just wanted to just affirm that. I think you, Trustee Kerner, about uplifting that, it's a lot of stuff, good stuff to read before the next.
Yeah, these come straight from C S B A.
Thank you.
And just kind of as a precursor to that, it, it, it's also to represent any laws and assembly bills that are good.
Thank you for that.
It writes a cycle, so something's off at the state level, and then it goes to C S B A, they revise the policy, and then we revise it.
So that's my question, C S B A, if, if it's a law, you have to follow it.
If it's a law, yes, I'm sorry.
But, but do we have to adhere to all of the C S B A?
We could choose to have a different legal team. Do something with it, but all of these, as the way, as they're written right now, are in compliance with either Ed Code or legislation.
Which are stable.
Which are, yes, that we, that we.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask, like, sometimes it's hard to, um, understand what is like suggested language. From C S B A, that maybe the board feels like, well, maybe we wanna have, well, we always wanna be compliant with the state of California. If they're a law and worse, but perhaps the language from C S B A is not necessarily what we wanna adopt, so. We and I sometimes still have a little bit of that understanding of what, what is. So, I, I presume all of us is because we have to adhere to some changes that have happened recently in the legislature.
I would say if there are certain language pieces you're unsure of, we can go back to C S B A and fill up all of those things up. Um, the more specificity we can get from you guys, there is a lot of language that comes from C S B A. So the more we can get from you guys, the, the more helpful that is. Often C S B A will give us choices, like you can do, the, the late fees is a big example. You could do no late fees, or you could do this, or you could do this. Sometimes we actually can embed all of those ors into our language, so we can then create policy around that, that is more local. Um, but I would say, uh, the more, the more you can let us know questions you have. Then we can go back and pull up the exact language. All of this is the exact language, but the exact language, and if you have a question about whether it's a suggestion or not. We can then filter you to that and work with you to understand that.
Or do you have any, does it seem pretty clear most of the time, whether it's a, a law or something?
Yeah.
So we'll be able to see it.
If you would like, for an eye, don't have to bring it back from August twenty-sixth, we could bring it back in September.
I'll, I'll try to let you know a few days, because I, I just need to.
Yes.
September ninth will be like.
Well, if, if we, we would bring it back on the twenty-sixth, I would consent.
Oh, if we don't have.
If you don't have any additional questions or, or edits, or, you know, a lot of more. If you do, we'd ever get back for some of it, and then do an open discussion, actually. It's up to you.
Yeah. Some of it, it's a lot of it, it's mandated by the state, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, alright, um, do we need an approval of the first reading?
No.
Yep, so we'll just hear, we're just here to read this, analyze it, and ask you if you have any follow-up questions, right?
Yeah.
Sounds great. Um, thank you very much. Alright, I think we are done. Uh, we kind of didn't finish as soon as I thought, so thank you very much for bearing with us. Yes, yes, no, I know, I have, I have a closed session too, so, yes. Yeah, so looking forward to continue the work. So everyone, thank you, good evening.